I'm going to ask our moderator to open the phones and allow us to answer your questions. Patrick?
The first question we have is from Mary Davies. So I have allowed you to speak. You may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Yeah, thank you all of you so much. Chief, I just am wondering, I understand from friends that we have a tank in Petaluma if we need it. And of course, I'm concerned about the recent $80,000 allocation for big weapons. What I'm curious about is what sort of incidents do you envision where those would be necessary? Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Patrick, okay to respond?
Yes.
Great, thank you. A great question, and I appreciate you bringing that up. First, the armored rescue vehicle. I will acknowledge it is a military surplus vehicle, but I want to give some background about why we have that tool and what its purpose is. An armored rescue vehicle is used by our tactical team and at times by patrol in situations where a violent confrontation or a shooting or hostage situation has trapped either innocent victims or injured victims or officers. In that situation where the suspect is armed and dangerous, it is not safe for an officer to approach to make that rescue or do that evacuation in a standard patrol car. The ballistic protection of a car is not sufficient to keep the officer safe. Agencies have gone to this armored rescue vehicle tool, usually assigned to their special weapons and tactics team, to be able to provide that level of armor protection and support for emergency rescue operations or to evacuate individuals from an area where they're under threat of gunfire. The most recent event that I can share with you where that tool was used was a situation we had on Western Avenue at a barber shop. And we had a subject that was presenting to be armed and dangerous. And we used that vehicle to put it between the barber shop and an elementary school that was directly across the street. Well, it wasn't needed for a rescue and it wasn't needed to evacuate anyone. It was there in case we had to. But it provided a level of armor protection for the children inside that school. The history of that vehicle is important to note. Prior to this vehicle, we had a surplus armored Brink's vehicle that was obviously done with its useful life with the Brink's company and fulfilled the role of an armored rescue vehicle for us for many years. Unfortunately, due to the nature of ballistics these days, the armor that was on that vehicle originally was not sufficient to protect our staff from the level of ammunition that's now available in the field. So we began a process to replace that vehicle. We initially had gone through a process to review and research the best tool available. And in this case, it happened to be a company that produces the vehicle here in America. And it looks more like a armored SUV vehicle. The cost unfortunately was about $350,000. And while we tried as a city to find those funds, we were not able to. Much like our rifle program, which I'm sure you know, you've mentioned and I'll be speaking to, we turned to military surplus for some of that equipment to help with that. At the time, the Almonte Police Department down in Southern California had the vehicle that we currently have in our possession. It had less than 2,000 miles on it. It had never been anywhere other than on American soil. And Almonte Police Department had used it to fulfill the same need for armored rescue vehicle that we were searching for. They were able to find the funding for that armored rescue vehicle made in the USA. They completed that purchase and then made the surplus vehicle available to another law enforcement agency. Having no other option and not having the funding to invest in something that doesn't look like a military surplus vehicle, we accepted that. I'll be honest, I recommended against it for the very reason that we're having this conversation. And I've been extremely sensitive about its use. We don't take it out to engage in parades or any other, you know, social rioting or disturbing of the peace. It is a specific tool for a specific mission. We've used it, I think, maybe four times outside of training. Three of those were high-risk search warrants where the suspects that we were attempting to arrest were armed and dangerous. The first warrant that we executed, the officers, as they approached the house, went in that vehicle and then exited that vehicle to serve the warrant. The suspect whose bedroom was in a second-story window, his nightstand, he had a handgun as well as a rifle. And his bedroom window looked right down on where the team approached. So while he didn't choose to arm himself and assault us, that vehicle is used in those types of situations. I want you to know that I would absolutely welcome replacing that vehicle. I acknowledge that it was designed for a different place and a different purpose. But it is, it does have the level of armor protection that we need. And it does meet the need that our team and our department has to be able to meet that call if we should receive it in the future. I hope we don't ever need it for that reason, but that is why we have it. Madam Mayor, I don't know if you want me to address the second part of her question, which is our-
I think that would be a good idea. It's, it seems it came up, so you might as well deal with it because it will probably come up again.
Sure, thank you. In response, well, sorry, I'll just talk briefly about the patrol rifles. So I recognize and support the importance of gun control and the simple perspective and feeling that less guns on the street mean less violence. The gun issue is not something we can fix here tonight or from Petaluma. And it will take nationwide leadership to change and address these issues. Until then, I respectfully ask that you consider the following information in support of our officers being properly equipped for their safety and the safety of this community. Much like I just explained about the armored rescue vehicle, I pray that we never need them, the patrol rifles, and I will remain hopeful that one day we are no longer needed or they are no longer needed by law enforcement and we can surplus them. With respect to patrol rifles, I want to provide some background to help everyone better understand the situation involving semi-automatic patrol rifles. The discussion regarding patrol rifles began to change from being issued to specialized teams and being issued to regular patrol officers following the 1997 Hollywood bank robbery, where suspects were armed with body armor and high-powered automatic rifles. Officers were at a significant disadvantage and 20 officers and innocent community members were shot and injured. In addition to this incident, the increasing frequency of domestic terrorism and mass casualty shootings has moved modern law enforcement to issue patrol rifles to each officer as standard issue equipment, just as we do for their sidearms. These weapons are tools to be used with specific policy for specific types of violent encounters, which are rare, but usually are very deadly. Because of, or sorry, in response to these incidents, the City of Petaluma authorized our department to carry patrol rifles in 1999. Over the past 21 years, we have implemented training and deployment policies based on best practices from research conducted across the country and around the world. I've compared our policies at the local, state, and national level and found them consistent with those best practices. Our policies are very specific when an officer may deploy with a patrol rifle. And without a specific threat, we never deploy them as a show of force. Since 1999, I'm proud to say we have successfully implemented and deployed patrol rifles without incident or concern. Presently, the issuance of departmental semi-automatic patrol rifles is an industry standard amongst law enforcement agencies in this state. When I began in law enforcement more than 30 years ago, I never imagined patrol rifles would become standard issued equipment in most police departments. I also never imagined the threat of violence from suspects armed with automatic or semi-automatic rifles involved in mass casualty events would rise to the level of frequency that we have seen in our country and around the world. I'm grateful when I recognize that our officers have not had to respond to a tragic active shooter event. However, my job as your police chief is not to plan for what has not happened, but to maintain a professional, well-trained, properly equipped, and ready to respond to any situation police department. Our deployment policy for active shooters who are actively engaged in killing or injuring innocent people is to deploy with a patrol rifle and locate and neutralize the threat. We do this because we do not have time, I'm sorry, we do this because we do not have a full-time on-duty tactical team like larger jurisdictions. And if we wait for a specially-equipped tactical team, innocent people will die. When the patrol rifle program was approved, the city lacked funding to purchase and issue each patrol rifle to an officer. Or sorry, to each officer. The department received a small amount of used surplus military rifles that were shared by officers. Training here in Petaluma and shooting incidents outside of our community showed that the rifles shared by multiple officers created safety, training, and liability challenges. A request was made at that time to receive more surplus rifles to issue to each officer, but they were not available. The city still lacked the available revenue to purchase new rifles. And as the need was so great and obvious to maintain the safety of our community, officers were forced to purchase their own rifles. Since then, and because of the concerns mentioned above with the shared military surplus rifles, many of our officers have made the same purchase to maintain their safety and readiness to this community. I'm sensitive to the optics of militarizing our police force. We have maintained a long history of professionalism, sound deployment decisions, good judgment with regard to force, and an extremely high level of training and accountability with all of our special teams and equipment. From police canines to the SWAT team, our armored rescue vehicle, to our patrol rifle program, we have never presented, shown, or used force that would be considered inappropriately aggressive or oppressive to this community. Because of this, I've been proud to serve with the men and women of this department as your police chief. And I'm absolutely committed to maintaining that outstanding record. Because of the amount of training needed on this weapon system and the fact that it must be cited in for each officer in order to meet the high level of accuracy and qualification, the best practice is to issue each officer their own patrol rifle. In addition to accuracy and confidence, it is always with them when they are on duty and they can respond immediately. Our patrol rifle program has identified training, safety, and equipment maintenance, as well as liability issues with officers carrying personally-owned rifles. The personally-owned rifles are not standardized and present training challenges. Officers placed in a situation to use deadly force to stop an armed suspect posing an imminent threat of death or great bodily injury should have the best weapon system that is maintained and supplied by the city. Liability exists when equipment standards fall short of industry standards for safety and reliability, not to mention using a personally-owned weapon for official use. I'm also sensitive to the fact that when we initiated this process last September, after identifying available funds, the situation we find ourselves in today with COVID-19 and social unrest for events occurring outside of our community. The delay in this process is unfortunate, but the need remained. This process was delayed by current research and a formal bidding process. I want everyone to know that we have tried to remedy the situation in prior years, but we're not successful in identifying funding. If we were not able to secure grant funding for another project in our budget, the funds for this replacement would not have existed. We unfortunately know of many incidents in recent history worldwide, which we don't ever want to imagine could happen in our city. Locally, our county has experienced incidents of gun-related violence on campuses of our high schools as we did this past October in Santa Rosa. Regionally, we've experienced gun violence at community events such as the Gilroy Garlic Festival and where the suspect was armed with a high-powered assault rifle. While we hope that our community never has to endure one of these situations, we would be derelict in our duty to this community to not prepare for them should they ever occur and our officers are properly prepared and equipped to best protect the community and themselves. Following this meeting, I will be sharing a message to the community that has this detail in it, as well as other details and some statistics that help answer the question that was raised. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about the patrol rifles as well as the armored rescue vehicle. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And I'm sure many, there will be other people who will have some concerns about these same issues. And as our moderators said earlier, we would like to ask and answer as many questions as possible. So if they are repetitive, please just state your opinion and then ask a new question. Okay, thank you. So moderator?
Thank you. Next, we have Ben Hoffman. So Ben, you may unmute yourself and begin asking your question.
Thank you. So I'm glad that we've gotten so far through implementing the eight can't wait policies, but I noticed that we haven't fully implemented them yet. What stands out the most to me is the relatively small amount of training hours, only a couple tens of hours in very important subjects. And I recognize there are some things you have to learn through theory and others that you have to learn through experience. And in these kinds of situations, it's very difficult to just learn from a book how to deal with racial bias and de-escalation. But these are extremely important situations that shouldn't be left so much to experience and so little to training. I feel that we should significantly increase the amount of training that our police officers go through in order to better prepare them for these different situations, rather than leaving them open to learning it more through experience than through training. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that's more of a comment than a question, and that's perfectly great. We will add all the comments to what we are collecting from tonight. So next?
Great. Anne Marie Daniels, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Hello, I also agree that the training hours for diversity training and racial bias need to be significantly upped. And in general, I'm looking in the comments as well, the Q and A regarding the percentage of the budget. I think that 39% for public safety, if that is solely the police department, seems very bloated as far as that is concerned because there's been multiple researches done that prove that investing in housing and social, you know, support and drug prevention efforts and things like that will make the community safer. So I would like clarification on is 39% solely the police budget in their salaries and then the guns and weapons that we're purchasing to keep us quote-unquote "safe"? And I'd also like to point out that we are talking about public safety because of white privilege and the suppression of black people in America, which does affect our community, even though this is a small town.
So can I, can I start? Can I answer?
Yes.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Thank you for not only your question, but your statement. Our public safety does represent 39% of the city's general fund. That's one fund in the city's budget represents staffing, equipment, training, just a whole host. And I can let the chief talk a little bit more about what that all involves. But our housing, for instance, then when the city, the city has just approved probably close to $50 or $60 million worth of affordable housing over this past year. And how much should I say? Did I just say $50,000?
Million.
Million, thank you. I want to make sure I said million. In projects for affordable housing. And that, you know, the monies that we put into those projects that we leverage come out of our housing fund, which is not reflected in our general fund. And it's also reflected, and it's born out of our policies. So city council put together an inclusionary policy that helps support affordable housing, requires affordable housing from developers every time they build, 15% automatic. So municipal finance, we could do a better job explaining our budget and we'd be happy to do that. But tonight, just, you know, as a brief example, you know, public safety is just a piece of our general fund.
Okay, so do you want to call the next person?
Yes, next up is Ruben, followed by Ellen Obstler. So Ruben, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Hello, I'm Ruben Scott, the president of Santa Rosa-Sonoma County NAACP. I want to say that after speaking to a lot of the black leaders inside of Petaluma, I want to tell your community that you are, tell your community that you're doing an amazing job. I've been speaking with Ken Savano for the last over a little bit of month now, and he's been very protective of your community. He wants to make sure you have the resources you need. He wants to make sure that anybody with any kind of anxiety, fears, concern, they're heard. So he has reached out to not only myself, but numerous members of our community. And I want to say, the resources that you guys are providing, especially our seniors, I want to say is excellent. I haven't heard any kind of complaint when it came to any of our NAACP members or even leaders from the black community in regards to anything that can actually be done to make things better. Everyone seemed to be, it sounds funny, but happy with their relationships. They say they have a great relationship with the mayor, a great relationship with the chief of police. So during this time, I want to say thank you guys for all the governing officials and everyone that's in charge in Petaluma that has been catering to us, understanding our needs and there to support us. I thank you guys for making us feel included.
Well, thank you, Ruben. We appreciate that. And I think I can speak for the chief on this, that you know, it does take a community and we need to make sure that those communication lines are broader and including just about everybody in our community. And so, you know, we're glad that they're working, but they, we hope they can work better. And I just wanted to say a little housekeeping thing to our moderator. During council, when someone goes beyond their time limit, our moderator very quickly cuts them right off. And I hope you will be a little more generous tonight if someone goes a little beyond that because it's a little bit of a different nature. So it just occurred to me during this time, so I want to make sure we're not getting anyone off.
Understood. That was what I was thinking, but I'm glad to hear that we're on the same page.
Okay, good. Thank you. Next?
Next is Ellen Obstler, followed by Ant Paredes. So Ellen, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking. Ellen? Okay, maybe we'll, I'll come back to Ellen after Ant Paredes. So Ant, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Hello, I just want to say thank you for doing this. I really appreciate it. I think it is nice to hear actually from the, even the double N, excuse me, the previous gentleman, that he believes we're doing a good job. One question I'd have though is just about the police training and the police training records. I poked around online today, found at cityofpetaluma.org/policetrainingrecords. Some information there, but it's very lacking in clarity for someone who doesn't usually read legal documents, I would say. Is there anything that can be done or is planning to be done to show which officers have gone through what training at what time? And when they are due to repeat that training for, you know, consistent education for how they need to carry themselves when they are patrolling? Thank you very much.
That's a great question. Thank you for that question. I can tell you that the California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training, the regulating agency for all peace officers in the state of California, conducts an annual audit of all of our training records. I'm proud to say that we have met all of our minimum training requirements every year that we've been audited. But that's not enough. What I shared with you earlier was not just the minimum. We've gone above that. You know, just looking at the minimum requirements is not enough. And I want you to know that while those standards are required every two years, we try to fit this type of training and related to these issues every time we have training. So when we talk about use of force, we talk about those policies at every level of training, at every level of force. And all the other trainings that I summarized. So I'm committed to working with you as a community member and others to make sure that when you look at those records that we've put up online and that are there for transparency, that they actually mean something and that they're easily understood. We have a habit in our world of writing stuff from our perspective, but we've been learning from this process, just as you mentioned, that we may be able to do a better job. So I'm committed to looking at those. I hope that you'll see my email address on the website write to me or to us, and we're happy to take a look at that and find a better way to make sure the community feels confident and trusting in our training and education.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll try Ellen Obstler again. Ellen, are you ready to speak? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna skip Ellen again. Patrick Mooney, followed by Pilar Garavé. So Patrick Mooney. Oh, hold on. It sounds like Ellen's back on now. So Ellen, you may speak now.
I'm so sorry. I'm having computer problems. So I'm just very confused. I thought we were supposed to submit online questions. I also thought that we were going to be prioritizing Black and Brown people's voices in terms of these questions. So I'm just kind of confused how this is going on. But since I have the floor here right now, I just want to say that, you know, there's, I've been out with these protesters for a couple of weeks. There's a disconnect here. We really need to stop with this rifles purchase, realizing that we're prioritizing the wrong things. We really need to fix up some of our police policies. There are, there are ways of doing it that will keep police safe, or everybody safe. But we don't have on the website the body worn camera policy. We can't have depression. And if it does, it needs to be amended. We need to know what's going on with the trainings to make sure that who is conducting the trainings and what the trainings entail. There really needs to be better community discussion around this. And please, 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 especially around your Lexi Poll generic policies, please get a citizen review board, especially including Black and Brown community members to review these to make sense, to see if it makes sense for Petaluma. I know you guys do as well as you can, but we could do better.
Thank you very much, Ellen. And the questions are being asked in the order that people are raising their hands. So there really is no way for us to know who is raising their hands. We have encouraged everybody to participate. So this is really, we're flying blind on this one. So I hope you can appreciate that. So thank you. I think that those were a lot of suggestions and I know we have those down. So let's go on to the next person.
Thank you. Patrick Mooney, followed by Pilar Garavé. So Patrick, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. I'd just like to start out by saying to Chief Savano that I appreciate your own personal integrity that you're bringing to this process. And it's very clear that you are trying to do the right thing, I think, as you see it from your perspective. And also I'd like to applaud your courage in posting that clear statement of aberrance over George Floyd's killing. However, from where I see it, the problem is that the perspective of the people that are the most deeply impacted by this problem we're facing right now of police brutality, they're not here in this discussion. You know, and I appreciate your sort of proactive undertaking of all the many elements of the Obama era standards that were set. But with all due respect to Ruben over at the NAACP, what I'm hearing from all of my connections that are black and brown and other people of color, it's not nearly enough. And so what I strongly recommend is that you and the city manager and the city council immediately convene another forum and that you reach out to leaders in the community in addition to Ruben. So you have a broad perspective of impacted voices and convene those people around a big table and then just listen to them and see what they have to say about what kind of changes we could make that would make it a really a better place. And perhaps because Petaluma is such a great place in so many ways, just a few more seconds, please moderator, we might be the perfect laboratory to help the nation see how we can all do so very much better. But you've got to start with the voices of the people that are impacted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, may I respond just briefly? Thank you for that. I share your concerns and your perspective. I want to just reiterate that, you know, I don't have the time right now to necessarily go down the list of the relationships that we've established in our community, but I can tell you that we are reaching out to every segment of our community. Not just, you know, a single individual. Secondly, I want to acknowledge that this is the first of many community engagement efforts. And I would welcome anyone that you know in the community, you know, we're hoping to hear from our community, community members that want to be at the table, who want to join the conversation. So I'm looking for help from you to help us make sure we get all the right people. So, you know, however that works for you, we welcome that. And this is not the end of the conversation. This is the beginning of the conversation and it's going to happen with absolute inclusivity. the beginning of the conversation and it's going to happen with absolute inclusivity of our entire community as we move forward.
Thank you, Chief.
Next is Pilar, followed by Zoe Kimberly. So Pilar, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Hello. So my question is about what type of training or even what percentage of the training that officers are already getting has to do with being able to identify or recognize somebody that is either mentally handicapped, mentally disabled, mentally in distress? And are there policies and procedures in place for additional people, not police officers, to be called in those types of situations to help with whatever may be going on?
Yes, that's an excellent question. In our policy manual, policy section 465 covers that exactly as you just mentioned. And I'll tell you this, that we don't just stop there. We've been hosting meetings with our local service providers who address mental health issues and other issues in the community, you know, to make sure that we are, you know, thinking of everyone in our community and providing the best possible resources to those members. We have other outreach programs that help us identify members of our community that may need special, you know, consideration when we contact them. And those programs have helped us be proactive and to, you know, to reduce those kinds of incidents from happening. Lastly, I'll tell you that in addition to those policies, the training that's required not only by post, but in our regular annual training program, addresses encounters of those, of that nature. With respect to would we welcome additional resources when those situations arise, I can tell you right now, the average police officer in Petaluma has about six minutes, an hour of available time. A lot of their time is spent responding to mental health calls for service, substance abuse, and even homeless, shelterless issues. And I don't know a police officer anywhere in this great state. I know certainly in my community, they wouldn't welcome more help to provide services to mental health and behavioral health, to substance abuse services and homelessness and as well as at-risk youth, and prevent these issues from becoming a situation where they've gone into crisis or we get called and these use of force incidents sometimes occur. So we are absolutely open to it. I have offered to county mental health and Department of Health Services to actually provide office space if we can get, you know, trained professionals to team up with our officers to respond to these calls. But like everyone, like us, the county and these departments are struggling for the resources to meet the demand. We currently work collaboratively with Department of Health Services with the mobile support team. And that team of trained professionals responds to those types of situations with us to help us provide the best level of service and deescalate those situations from becoming a crisis. I appreciate that question. It's a very good one.
So I saw our city manager lean in. I didn't know if she was wanting to say something, but if you don't, I do. But so, okay, so what I was just going to say is Chief Savano, and I think we all know this, we all know that we have no safety nets, that they have totally been defunded. And the person who or the group that gets to deal with all the problems that we have stopped funding, like mental health care, like social welfare, like homelessness and providing low income housing and dealing, abolishing or defunding Boys and Girls Clubs falls to the police and to the jails. And we all know that that is inadequate and it's not doing the work. And it's probably not something the police really want to be doing. They want to be doing crime fighting. They don't want to be doing social work necessarily. I don't want to speak for them all. But I really do believe that we need to really understand that when we talk about defunding the police, because our police are being asked to do things that are absolutely not what they're trained for. And we need to be able to fund those, those services while we are looking at how we can make our police work better in our community. So thank you for that question and thank you to our police force. So Patrick?
Next is Zoe Kimberly, followed by Ben Peters. So you may unmute yourself.
Thank you, everyone, for this meeting and for all the really thoughtful comments and questions that have been put forth so far. And thank you, Chief Savano, for just showing up with just so much genuine care for the community. It really shows in your response and how you showed up. My question is kind of a follow-up on Patrick a few, a few questions ago. In seeing as Petaluma City Government does not reflect the Myra demographics that make up our town, how do you plan to facilitate greater trust and engagement between these underrepresented groups and police? What is the city council doing to get more diverse representation elected to a city council and committees? At the goals and priority meetings earlier this year, city council identified increased engagement and diversity as a goal, but did not lay out any steps or anything about how we intend to do that. Has there been any action steps identified or taken on this issue since then? And if not, how do we create a clear action plan to reach out to communities that are, have not been engaged in city government so far? And typically, from the people that I've talked to that are from underrepresented communities, they don't feel comfortable in that space. They don't feel like it's been a welcoming space. So what can we do to make it a more welcoming and engaging space for different voices? Thanks.
So I'll jump in on this one. Yes, the goal setting was an amazingly successful event. It was the follow-on, our second annual one, and it had collected a lot of really great community input. However, it's been on hold since the whole shelter in place and the COVID attack on our community. So our staff has had almost no time to work on anything other than delivering essential services at this point and doing that remotely. So while we had a very good meeting, we have absolutely not had the opportunity to do the follow-up on that. And that does need to be done. And in some ways, the national outrage for this ongoing attack on, on black people in particular has really brought people to the fore. So that that aspect that you just addressed, I believe, can and should be addressed by trying to reach out to people in this way. And if you have other ways to suggest, please put it in writing and send that to us, because we are trying to do what we can. And this is one of the ways we're doing that. So we're hoping that we will find some success on that.
Mayor, I'd like to add, Zoe, just really good, good point. When I joined the city a little over a year and a half ago, we made a commitment to engage our community. And with the resources we have right now, we have, we have done a pretty good job with, with starting to develop those tools to meet people where they are. You know, having this, this forum simulcast in Spanish, for instance, or going out to the faith community and reaching out to communities in their space rather than waiting for folks to come to us. We have a long way to go and we welcome your ideas. But we have really made a commitment to not only engaging our community, but learning who our community is and how best to deliver information and, and get feedback and get participation. Our committees and commissions need to represent our community. And we are, we are working hard to make sure that we understand how to best outreach and, and get that participation. Would love to have your ideas. Thank you.
Next is Ben Peters, followed by Nora Pearl. Ben, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I have two questions. So the first question, it sounds like the mayor and perhaps the police chief are interested in reallocating some of the police funds to other outreach programs like the Oregon Cahoots Program. So could you clarify your sentiments about reallocating police funds away from active duty police officers and towards something like the Cahoots Program? And then the second question relates to environmental justice, which I think is an important component, especially right now with our current health emergency. And so what we do know in the Bay Area is the communities of Richmond, Bonnisha, Antioch, all the places where the oil refineries are, where the minority communities live, have very high rates of asthma, lung disease, and are particularly hard hit by this crisis. And I want to know the police chief's sentiments on his plan to phase out fossil fuel use in his department, starting with vehicle electrification. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know if Ken, if you don't mind if I jump in first on this, Ken?
Of course not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, I'm not aware of what the Oregon Cahoots Program is, but I'm sure I can Google that after this meeting. But, you know, when I was talking about the other things that need to be funded, I was not talking about that in lieu of funding our police. I think that 39%, while that may sound very high to, to you, and as the city manager pointed out, that's 39% of the general fund, not the entire budget. It is what we use to train our police and to make our police the, what we want to have them in our community. And take, and it used to be a higher percentage of our general fund, as recently as 2008, before the big economic downturn. So I am not looking to defund our police. I am looking at reimagining how our police interact with our community and how to get more funds to provide the, the deal with homelessness issues, deal with at-risk youth issues, deal with mental health issues, those and drug addiction and substance abuse issues. You know, we used to have a policeman who, who had a sober circle and we had police who interacted with the homelessness and they were incredibly effective. But that's really probably not the best use of our police. And, and there are other trained professionals that could do that work. So we need to find the funding for that. And, and I think that's going to come, you know, from the state, I hope. We need to, I don't, I'm not counting on anything from the federal government at this point, but there is a future. So maybe the chief would like to respond to anything else or not? I don't know.
No, I agree with you, Madam Mayor. And I certainly, my acknowledgement of needing help with more resources is certainly not to unfund anything from our budget. Our budget is still more than 20% below where it was several years ago. We still have not restored lost positions. We're in the same boat across the city and many departments. So, you know, advocating to unfund or defund any of our resources right now, I would not support. But I would support more help and where that comes from, additional revenue locally, the county level, the state level, the federal level, we would absolutely welcome more help addressing those issues so that we can address other issues that are important to the community. We haven't even touched on the impacts of traffic safety in this community and how we kill and injure more people, almost twice as many people in traffic related collisions than we do from criminal acts. And that's something that we're struggling with trying to keep up with. So we would welcome more help, but not at the expense of impacting resources that are vitally important right now. To answer your second question, Ben, you know, we are doing everything we possibly can to be ready to reduce our fossil fuel impacts on the environment. Our latest purchase of vehicles, because we need them as emergency vehicles, has to have a bi-energy source of petroleum fuels, fossil fuels, as well as electricity. But we've committed to running those vehicles on electricity whenever we can. That's our first step. And as technology evolves, you know, we're going to continue to look at ways to reduce that, that impact. We're still, we're still struggling to try and find funding to put in charging stations at our facilities. So, you know, when we talk about defunding police, it's all about priorities and how we get there. There's no disagreement that we need to be there. We're just trying to evaluate and keep up with the changing technology with options for electric vehicles to meet our needs and be able to respond during emergencies and extended situations. So I appreciate the question and looking forward to having coffee with you and talking more about how we can collaborate on that.
Thank you. Peggy, did you want to speak? You're muted.
Yep, I just found that out. Thank you. The police department's budget represents 9% of the total city budget. So 39% of our general fund, but 9% of our total budget. Just clarification.
Thank you very much. Patrick?
And just to tag on to the chief's last statement, for everybody's information that's interested, Snoma Clean Power tomorrow is hosting a workshop about the Snoma Coast Cal EV IP program that would give businesses and government agencies, including Petaluma, the opportunity to apply for grant funds to install EV chargers. So I'll be watching that and we'll be lining up our application for July when that program opens up. So we're, we're definitely exploring all the avenues to, to promote the electrification. So with that plug aside, Nora Pearl is next, followed by Nikki Carroll. So Nora, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have been so impressed by hearing all of this. I almost think we should fund our police some more. They only get 9%. But it seems that the inheritance, or you've inherited a burden of the national scene of fear of the militarization of police. And I think that's why so much of this is happening. But I am concerned that so much of the presentation had to do with defending the cost of all of this military and force concern. But if there's 98% of people that are not being met with force, I'd like to hear more about how that is met, because there is such a culture of fear that when police appear dressed up as they are, people get afraid and run. And it's no surprise. So I'd like to see somehow a revisioning of what we see police departments to be, whether they're a force that's coming at you, or whether it's something a little bit more benevolent that doesn't make people so fearful. Anyway, if you could address that factor.
I'd be happy to do that, Madam Mayor. One of the, one of the guiding themes from the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing is to change the culture of policing. And one of the first things that that aims to do is to address the perception of kind of that warrior image and, and move it to a place of more of the guardian image. And so while we recognize that there are times when we are in situations where we have to be tactically sound and trained and prepared, unfortunately, in violent confrontations, a majority of our work is being guardians of our community. And so that is the nature of our culture here. It's a balance, obviously, but in terms of our outward facing public posture, it is very much as guardians of this community. And we can only achieve that level of confidence of people feeling safe and equality and peace in this community for anyone out on the street or driving in a car or whatever, when we work together to listen and to hear how people feel, to talk about experiences they've had, and to continue our training and education, you know, consistently, so that we can maintain a high level of professionalism and the service that you've all come to expect from us.
Thank you. Okay, Patrick?
The next speaker is Nikki Carroll, followed by Marja Windsor-Tar. So Nikki, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Good evening. First of all, I think that this meeting is a demonstration of the commitment that the three of you have to this community and to being in communication with us. And I am once again proud to be a Petaluman. And I wanted to just put in a little adjustment to what Chief Savano just said about the recommendations for 21st Century Policing that was the past president, not the current one. At any rate, last week, I drove past the parking lot that is somewhat sheltered, but it's on Lakeville at the 101 entrance. I saw three Petaluma patrol cars there with a single civilian car and a Latino man was out of the car and in a conversation with one of the officers with the others looking on. Obviously, I don't know Obviously, I don't know the circumstances of that situation, but it made me wonder, in addition to policies against undue use of force, are there policies and procedures to, against undue intimidation, particularly for our communities of color?
Yes, very good question. Absolutely. We do bias-based policing training consistently throughout the organization. And, you know, in my comments earlier about being guardians of this community, if people are not feeling that way when they have a contact with our staff, we expect that the community will reach out to us. You know, we're human beings, you know, doing a difficult job. And, you know, we do make mistakes and we don't always get it right. But we are trying our best. And I don't know the circumstances of that particular contact, but I know this, that most times that when we investigate those situations, you know, those situations are either, you know, not as they were observed or the concerns weren't present by the person involved. But we never want to make the assumption and leave a community member wondering if we were not treating someone in our community with what I spoke about earlier, which is procedural justice, giving everyone voice, being neutral, treating everyone with dignity and respect, and being trustworthy and having the goodwill of the community in mind before ourselves. If you ever witness anything out in, out in the field, on the street, with our staff that is, goes anything against what I just said, we, my supervisors, my command staff, we expect to hear about it and we will thoroughly investigate it. I am confident that we don't have people on our force and in our ranks that have that mindset and are out treating our community members that way. But a lot of times additional dialogue and communication helps explain maybe why we did something the way we did it, why we chose a particular tactic. But let's talk about it. Let's not leave that contact either with that person or the person who watched it with those questions that don't leave them feeling that way and feeling safe and at peace in this community. Let's, let's have those conversations and work through those situations.
Thank you. Patrick?
Next is Marsha Windsor-Tar, followed by JMo. So Marsha, you may speak now. Marsha? You may need to hit the unmute button.
Sorry for that. This is Fred Tar, and I wanted to thank the city staff and the mayor for the chance to address some of the concerns. This is a very simple question, but I think it's a very important question. And it deals with, the question is, how many police officers live and work in Petaluma? The question is, just because we'd like to find out how many people have a real interest in this community. And I think the answer is positive, but I'd like to have the chief speak to that. The other question I do have, and I think it's been discussed earlier, and how many racial minorities do, does the Petaluma Police Department have on staff? Thank you very much.
I appreciate that question. And what I will do is on our transparency portal after this meeting, we'll post that information up in more detail. I can tell you that in our recent, our last check, we experienced a rate of at least fifty percent of our staff living in this community. I know that we've had a lot of turnover and a lot of new, you know, officers come into the ranks. And I know that the cost of housing has been a barrier for them to live in our community as well as our recruitment and retention efforts to recruit qualified peace officers to this, to this department. When it comes to diversity in our organization, we would certainly welcome and, you know, encourage anyone from this community to apply to be a public servant. Our programs reach out to our intern programs. We have a cadet program. We have an explorer program. And we're constantly engaging the community and encouraging people through our local high schools to join our ranks and become members of our department. I'd like to just point out, I'll put up specific demographics of our organization for everyone to see. But I know that right now we have a biracial officer currently on staff as well as several officers who are bilingual in Spanish and are from the Spanish community. I can also tell you that while we don't have enough, you know, female officers, we certainly are always recruiting to try and fill our ranks with a diverse representation of our community members. So I'll put up specific details so that everyone can see that after this meeting.
And Ken, would that be on the city website or where would you be putting that?
Yeah, so on the city website, we have a transparency portal and it'll be posted there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Next speaker is JMo, followed by Sarah Sass. JMo, you may unmute yourself.
Thanks very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all for taking the time this evening. I am a new homeowner in Petaluma and have been heartened by the response to this moment from the city and its residents. But I am disappointed at the mayor's reservations about reallocating resources away from the police department when we all seem to be in agreement that they are handling situations outside of their quote-unquote "crime-fighting" job description. I'd like the mayor and chief to speak specifically about the report posted to the transparency portal, which stated that of fifty-six thousand calls for service in 2019, ninety-six and a half percent of those contacts did not result in arrest. So I'm curious, what were the nature of that vast majority of engagements? And why are armed police officers the correct public entity to address those situations?
Is that the end of your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Ken, do you want to take that first or do you want me to jump in?
I'll always yield to you, Madam Mayor, and I'll commit to you. Thank you.
Okay, well, my, my opinion about this is that I do not think that we have enough money for enough training for our police, in all honesty. I want to see our police better trained. And I do want to see us re-defining the role of our police in the, in the way that Ken described as being more of guardians. I think that is what we're looking for. And that just doesn't come with the, with a magic wand. That comes from actually not only training people to be different, but recruiting different kinds of people and also follow-up training. And those things are expensive. Those just don't, you know, you can't just once and done. It is an iterative process. And if it isn't done again and again, it doesn't work because people need to be reinforced in the behavior that is perhaps not natural to them. And, and we want to enforce or reinforce people working together in a way that they may not be used to. And so for that reason, I just don't think we can do it for less money. That's just my honest opinion about that. The other things that we need to do, we absolutely need to find money for. So, and about the ninety-six and a half percent, that's really Ken's area. I actually don't follow those things that closely. But I will tell you, I've had a number of people call me about having had a horrible thing happen and they called the police. And then they were able to talk through it after they reported it and the police responded. And so then it didn't, and it didn't go any farther. But they needed to have that interaction with the police in order for the problem to go away. So no one got arrested. Those are the outcomes we're looking for. You know, we're looking for a high level of calls to the police that don't end in arrest. That means the police are doing their job.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with everything that you said, and I would just add this.
They might.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me? Okay? Okay, good. I would add this, that with respect to your question specifically, or what types of calls make up the ninety-six percent that didn't result in an arrest. I don't have all of the data in front of me to summarize for you, but I will make sure that my staff and I work to put that up on the transparency portal in short order. I can tell you this, though. The number-one case number that we issue right now, and remember, we're a law enforcement agency. We're not a behavioral health department or the healthcare system, is for mental health evaluations and detentions. That's the number-one case number that we issue. So that, if that tells you anything, on any given day, sometimes two or three times a day, we are responding to mental health calls for service. I completely agree with you that those calls for service in certain situations could be better handled with other resources and certainly handled better in terms of services and support to where they wouldn't result in a crisis. When we deinstitutionalize the mental health system, we place this burden and responsibility not only on law enforcement, but the family members of those that have mental health challenges. And so, you know, that's just one example, and I can go down the list. Substance abuse, the shelterless population, and for the variety of issues that are connected there. I'm happy to put up on the transparency portal the details of those calls for service and those types of calls. But that's just an example of, you know, how those calls are generating a significant amount of work for our staff. I agree with you that there are a lot of other issues in the community that we could be addressing. And we hope to have more than six minutes of available time for officers to do proactive policing, which keeps our community safe, deters crime from happening, and keeps the criminals from coming in and victimizing our community members. Thank you.
Patrick?
Next speaker is Sarah Sass, followed by Karen Niasse. Wrong button. I'll get it. There we go. So Sarah, you may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Hi, good evening. I just want to first and foremost thank everyone with city staff that is hosting and organizing this tonight. And as a local business owner and former bartender of thirteen years downtown, I just want to express my thanks for all the times that I've been able to reach out to Petaluma police and when they've been able to deescalate situations or handle things that I might not be able to when I was a young woman bartending all by myself. And I want to take a moment to say thank you. And also to speak on how thankful I am that you guys have that rescue vehicle when the man who had recently abused his partner barricaded himself in the barber shop. And I can't remember if he had a gun in his car or if it was reported that he might. But that was just terrifying and it just felt so much better to have that giant scary-looking vehicle in between the barber shop and also the preschool where my child wasn't there that day, but there was many other people and many other children that I love that were there. And it just felt safe to know that our resources were being put there, even though I know that it didn't come from our funds. But I'm just glad that we had it as a resource. And I just want to take a moment to just appreciate the times that I've had to interact with Petaluma PD that they've all been positive over the nearly twenty years that I've lived here. And I just wanted to comment and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Next?
Next is Karen Niasse, followed by Poppy Dodge. So Karen, you may unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, I've been noticing that, of course, people haven't been out in public. And so the active shooter scenario is way down. I can't think of the last time I heard of one. But meanwhile, what is happening, at least at the national level, is just an increasing and accelerating, it seems, pace of white supremacist terror actions, whether it's black men being found hanging from trees or violence by law enforcement themselves. So my question is, what is the Petaluma Police Department's plan of action should a group of armed white supremacists start massing? Whether they were Petaluma people or from somewhere else, or if you got intelligence that they were coming? What's your plan to handle basically white supremacist terror in Petaluma? Thank you.
It's a great question. You know, obviously, we have to apply the Constitution and the First Amendment of free speech to everyone equally. We are connected, you know, daily and with, at several levels with the intelligence community. And, you know, just like, you know, any group, there are those that purport and engage in violence and engage in criminal activity. And we would certainly, you know, do everything we needed to do to be prepared for that as, as we have done to ensure the safety and the peaceful protests that have been occurring here in our community. And I just have to take a moment to thank this community for the, the way and the nature of you expressing your anger and frustration and emotion during this difficult time. You have done it peacefully, you know. And I just have to say thank you to all of you for doing that. So with whatever intelligence was coming in about that, we would prepare for it like we would and like most other cities have, with an intent on trying to keep it peaceful and respect the rights and the safety of everyone in our community.
Chief, can I also add racism will not be tolerated here in Petaluma. And we, we stand strong on that. And we definitely have a not-in-our-town mentality. So I know that we would apply that as well.
And not only mentality of not in our town, but an actual resolution to that effect.
Yes.
So, yes, thank you. I just want to say that I think that we are coming up to the end of our hour and a half, which is astonishing. And we have a huge list of people who still want to ask questions. At this time, I'm going to remind people that they can go to the city's website. And on our homepage, there will be a link for people to ask their questions. We would like you to do that because we really want to get all your questions and comments so that we can use this information for our next steps. So right now, I know that Patrick has called on one more person. So we're going to hear from that person. And, but that will be the last person we're calling on today.
So the, the last speaker is Poppy Dodge. So Poppy, you may unmute yourself now and begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Michael Miller. Poppy Dodge is my wife, so I appreciate you taking our call. I also want to say that I am an African-American male. I live in Petaluma. My wife and two kids live here as well. They both go to junior high and high school here. So here is the person of color that lives in your community that's really trying to express what we're feeling and where we're coming from. I think that the money spent on the rifle program, it's more than just optics. I think that I really appreciate the, all of the efforts that you're making, Chief Savano, that everyone else is making to sort of train your officers in the proper use of force, de-escalation, and implicit bias. But I think until that training has really been shown to be effective, to then turn around and spend precious funds to arm them, I just think is immoral and the wrong tact to take. But my question is specifically, now that you have moved forward with this rifle program, are you going to commit to no longer allowing your officers to use their own personally purchased and weapons in the, in the, in the, in the use of their role? Also, my next question would be about, there's the warrior training. I'd like to know what your thoughts are on warrior training and if you're ready to sort of speak on outlaw or, or speak against that in terms of ways to train your officers. And I'd also like to know what the oversight policy, you talked about a very specific policy that is enacted when you're going to use those rifles. Who has oversight over those policies and who's going to make sure that the rifles don't come out in the wrong situations? Thank you.
Thank you. Those are, those are great questions. First, let me start with the issue of personally-owned weapons. No, they will not be allowed to be carried. That's the intent of providing them with the department-issued patrol rifle. Secondly, with respect to the training that you mentioned about warrior versus guardian, this is something that we've been training for many, many years. And I think that, and I don't have the list in front of me, but just recently, on Friday, or, sorry, on a Monday, our patrol team responded to a situation where a woman was in crisis. She was armed with a knife and she actually charged the officers when they exited their patrol car. At a time many, many years ago, that probably would have resulted in a deadly force encounter. And what those two officers did was they tactically retreated to the rear of their patrol car to create time and distance, to give them more time to de-escalate the situation. Those officers, which we'll be recognizing formally for their, their performance in that incident, is one of many incidents that I could describe to the community when we gather again or in a different forum, where we have demonstrated that the training that we're doing, the mentality that we have of, of putting the value on every single human life in this community and that we only use force when we absolutely have to, not because we can, that we have demonstrated that the training that we've been engaged in, the mindset that we've been focusing on, which starts in the academy, starts with our field training program and has continued throughout our organizational culture, we have embraced that recommendation. And I can tell you, I've been employed here as a peace officer for twenty-six years. And I have never, ever stood alongside men and women who didn't feel the same way about being guardians over this community. The sad reality is that we also have to be warriors at times. But overwhelmingly, our guardian mentality and mindset, you know, guides us in how we deliver service in this community. So I appreciate the question. It's a very good question. I would enjoy further discussions with you to help kind of clarify some of that in more detail. With regard to policy oversight, all of our policies are online. So I would encourage you to take a look at all of those policies. And as we continue this dialogue, be willing to bring your questions and specific concerns about any of our policies to our attention. That's the process we've committed to here as a city. to our attention. That's the process we've committed to here as a city. And as your police chief and my staff, they stand right behind me on that. We can always be better. We take very seriously our mission to work with our community to provide professional police services. And we've been doing it for a long time. We do not ignore the history of our profession. As a matter of fact, I require that our staff study it. We talk about it, especially those times in our history where we have not built trust with the community or confidence in the community. We can't forget that. And certainly, we're experiencing a time where there may be some in our profession that either aren't aware of it or aren't studying it. We are in Petaluma, and our intent there is so that we don't ever have that happen here. We don't repeat history. We don't create situations that break that trust and confidence in those we serve. And that's my commitment to you and the commitment of my staff. I appreciate that question.
Well, I appreciate your response as well. And it's a good note to end on, although I would like to give our city manager a opportunity to say something, if she would like to say something in, in ending our.
I just want to, I, I just want to thank our community for showing up. And, you know, that's what Petaluma does, is show up and, and speak out and voice your concerns because we are listening. You have our attention. You'll always have our attention. But we are very focused on this topic. And we need more of these forums. We need, you know, we need to get more information and your feedback on, so we can talk with our council about what, what next steps look like and what does reimagining public safety look like? And how we can support our Petaluma Police Department and support our community? And how we can be better as a city to provide you services that you deserve that is inclusive of all of our community. So thank you. Thank you. And I'm sorry that we weren't able to talk with all of you, but I have a feeling that over the next few weeks and months, that we will all have a conversation at, at some point. So thank you.
So I just want to reiterate that thanks to everybody. And again, apologize that we didn't get to everybody, but we've had over two-hundred-and-fifty people sign on to speak. So that's a remarkable number of people in attendance. And hopefully, if, if the next time we do this, it's through the same format, we may have an opportunity to only choose people who haven't already spoken, or at least choose those people first so that we have as much diversity as we can have. I'd like to thank our chief of police and our city manager for everything you do and, and for being here to that, tonight. I'd like to thank our staff member and moderator, Patrick Carter, and those who are doing so behind the scenes, and our interpreter, Mariana Riva-Rola. So thank you all very much. And remember, it only happens if you show up. So be the change you want to see and let us know about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.